Well, the October School, oh, there we go. I hereby call the October 10th school board meeting to order. First on the agenda items tonight, thank you everybody for being here tonight and being on time, I appreciate it. First is the approval of the agenda as presented, we've all had a chance to review the agenda. Do we have an amendment of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I move to amend the agenda to add additional information to the action item listed on tonight's agenda for appointment of the Library Materials Committee, specifically to add Sarah Long as the name for the Ashland District and to substitute Dr. Frank Schelp as the name for the South and the District.
Thank you, Mr. Eichenberry. Do I hear, I have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Coleman with the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Now, do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda as amended? Mr. Redd with the motion.
Second, sir.
Ms. Hawkins with the second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. With that, I think the only thing left now is that I would entertain a motion to go into closed session, is there someone who'd like to make that motion? Don't all speak up at one time, please.
Mr. Chair, I so move that we go into closed session.
I hate to tell you this, but you have to read it verbatim because it has to be recorded in the minutes, that's one of the things I learned. That's why no one wants to volunteer, because they don't want to read.
I don't, yes, I apologize, you do, you have to read it.
Do you have it, do you want me to share it with you?
Oh, I got it.
I don't have it.
Oh, here. Mr. Eichenberry can read it, he has it.
I apologize to this entire board.
It's okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I make a motion through the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A, Item 1, Personnel Review Recommendations of the Superintendent for Resignations, Appointments, Transfers, Assignments, Promotions, Terminations, Salary Adjustments, and Leagues for Teachers and Other Employees. Section 2.2-3711, Item A and II, Consideration of Requests of Religious Exemption from Compulsory School Attendance. Section 2.2-3711, Item A and VIII, Consultation with Legal Counsel Regarding Dispute Resolution for Special Ed Matter.
Thank you, Mr. Eichenberry. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Coleman with the second. Are there any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries, we will now move into closed session. Let the record reflect it, Mr. Whitley came 10 minutes late.
this meeting to order. And at this time, I would entertain a certification of closed meeting. Mr. Hunley?
We have to do a return to open session first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would accept a motion to return to open session, please. I guess I flipped the page one too soon. I'm sorry. I'd entertain a motion to return to open session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to return to open session.
We have a motion on the floor for Mr. Hunley. I'm sorry, Mr. Eichenberry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hunley. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're back to open session. Now, I would entertain a certification of closed meeting. Mr. Hunley.
Mr. Chair, I move that we certify the content of our closed session.
Okay. Can you read down at the bottom there?
Sorry, sorry. Whereas the Hanover County School Board has convened closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.237-12D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Hanover County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Hunley. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Eichenberry, are there any discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And at this time, as we get ready to go into our formal part of the evening, I will, are we going to have the colors come forward first and then do the invocation? How do you want to do it?
I have a moment.
Okay, I have the invocation. Okay. At this time, I'll ask that audience, please join me in a moment of silence. I have two requests tonight. One is for Mr. Stephen Thompson, who passed away recently. Mr. Thompson joined Hanover County Public Schools in 2007 at Atlee High School as a health and public physical education teacher. He later switched to the adaptive physical education, teaching at John M. Gandy Elementary School, Liberty Middle School, and the Hanover County One Line School. Throughout his tenure, Mr. Thompson coached various athletic teams at Atlee High School. Our thoughts are with the Thompson family and our school community. I would also ask that you join us in a moment of silence for the tragic loss of life in and around Israel. Let us pray. Amen. At this time, we will have the invocation led by Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if you wish, please stand with me. And as we pray, wise Almighty, as we come before you this evening, we invite your presence into this meeting. It is our hope and desire that all said and done will be to uplift the entire Hanover County School Division and its community. Amen.
Amen. And this evening, for our pledge of allegiance, we are honored to have with us the following cadets from Patrick Henry and Mechanicsville Hanover Naval Junior ROTC, who will serve as our color guard this evening. Left rifle will be Cadet Chief Petty Officer Marcus Krantz from Mechanicsville High School. The state flag is being carried by Cadet Petty Officer First Class Aaron Moore of Hanover High School. The United States flag is being carried by Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Elena Cooper from Patrick Henry High School. And our right rifle is Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Gabriel White, also of Patrick Henry High School. Colors post?
Forward.
Left.
Right.
Colors.
Right.
Present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or.
Colors.
Right.
Forward.
Thank you. Be seated. I'll tell you, LT, before you leave, I just want to make
this point. That's very impressive, and we really appreciate you bringing the cadets and sharing them here with us this evening. And I thank you both for what you're doing for our excellent naval junior ROTC program at our high schools. So, we thank you very much. Now, moving on with our agenda tonight, I'll do the entertainment approval of amendments. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of our minutes.
Mr. Hunley, do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I have a second.
Ms. Hawkins, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion about the minutes? A call for the question, then. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion carries. And at this time, Dr. Gill, I believe we're up to recognition and announcements.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have several recognitions this evening. Several students who will be recognized by our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Chris Whitley, and we also have one outside presenter this evening. And, Mr. Chair, if you would join me down front.
Thank you, Dr. Gill. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it is always a pleasure to bring forth the fantastic news and accomplishments of our student and staff. Tonight's first recognition goes to Atlee High School, who for the second year in a row, has the top patriotic field design in the United States. Led by their talented teacher, Mr. Mark Moran, students in the Atlee's Advanced Turf Grass Applications Course created the winning chuckerboard U.S. flag design for the 2022-23 Homecoming Football Game that won this year's Stars in Stripes contest from the Sports Field Management Association, which you will see on your screen.
Very impressive.
This competition included designs from K-12 collegiate and professional levels. Congratulations to the two-time reigning champs from Raider Nation, who are here this evening to be recognized. Please come forward. And, Mr. Moran, don't go far, because our next recognition of the night goes to students, again, from Atlee High School, who earned top honors at the state FFA competition, taking first place in the FFA Turf Science Team category. The Atlee FFA was also recognized as a national FFA Superior Chapter. Students, as I call your name, please come forward to be recognized. Evan Dupuy, Jenna Herndon, Preston Milburn, and Leila Whitlock. And, Mr. Moran, please come forward as well. Congratulations. [applause] Congratulations, guys. [applause] At this time, it is my pleasure to invite to the podium Mr. Antonio Rice with Jobs for Virginia Graduates, who will present our next recognition of the night.
All right. I'm Antonio Rice, President and CEO for Jobs for Virginia Graduates. And we have a wonderful program at Patrick Henry High School. Our specialist, and I'll bring you up later, let me brag on you a little bit first, Kelly Blythe has been recognized. And so what we do with Jobs for Virginia Graduates, we recognize students that are facing barriers to success. I was a JBG kid. I was the youngest of ten. Had to share a bed with my brother. Smelly feet, terrible, awful. And so... But there was somebody in the school system who saw something in me that I didn't see in myself. That was my champion. That's Kelly Blythe. That's who she's been over there at Patrick Henry High School. And it's just the outstanding work that she's done. And so we focus on several areas, but the main areas are graduation, contact rate, graduation rate, employment rate, full-time employment, positive outcomes, and further education. And so I think you guys are looking at this. And so I have a bit of a sports background. I'm a UVA grad. I played football at University of Virginia. Played football for the Dallas Cowboys. And I say that with a tongue-in-cheek, because I was pretty much doing what you all are doing right now, sitting and watching. Yeah, best seat in the house, it was awesome. All the Gatorade you can drink, it was great. And so we used to have a saying, "The big eye in the sky don't lie." Right? Everything is being filmed, you have to watch it over and over again, all that good stuff. Well, stats don't lie. So, contact rate basically is that you're gonna reach out every month to your students that have already graduated and check on them, make sure that they're doing what they need to be doing, you're coaching them up, all that good stuff. Well, her contact rate is 100%. Graduation rate is 100%. Employment rate is 83%. Full-time employment is 96%. Positive outcome rate is 100%. And further education rate is 100%. The big eye in the sky don't lie, and neither do stats. And so Kelly was recognized at our... At the national level. So, I'm the Virginia affiliate, but there's a Maryland affiliate, there's a Nevada affiliate, there's Utah, everything. And so nationally, her numbers outmatched just about everybody. And so she was acknowledged at our training seminar in Kentucky. So, I have this for her. But the big thing is, we used to have a five-of-five award. Just recently, it turned to a six-of-six, and she knocked it out of the park. So, if you don't mind me asking Kelly to come on up, and we can put a round of applause for her and accept these two awards. And so she may not want to address, but look, I always tell folks, go out to the program, go out to her school. She's got a lot of great things going on in regards to how she engages her students. And obviously, it's working, because her stats, again, don't lie. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, wow.
so I will be handling that. Each year, the Virginia School Board Association, the VSBA, conducts numerous trainings and conferences, and school board members are awarded points for attending those trainings and furthering their own professional development and their pursuit of being the best board members that they possibly can be. This year, all five school board members who are eligible received recognition from the VSBA, only to not being recognized, but certainly want to point out are our brand-new ones, Mr. Coleman and Ms. Welsh, because they weren't eligible. This is for last year, but have no doubt they'll be on the list for next year. So, in order here, we will start with Mr. Redd, who achieved the Certificate of Achievement from the VSBA. Mr. Eichenberry, Certificate of Achievement. Mr. May, Certificate of Honor. Mrs. Hawkins, Certificate of Honor. And Mr. Hunley, the Certificate of Distinction. Congratulations to you all.
Dr. Gill, I believe we're up to...
This is the time for any board member recognitions? Yes, sir.
Yes. So, do we have any board members with any recognitions or comments tonight? Coach Ike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to recognize that we have a replacement meeting at Battlefield Park Elementary School coming up on October the 25th at 6:30 for building a new school. Correct, Ms. Berta? Correct. And so that will be at 6:30 PM, and then there's a virtual meeting at 6:30 PM on November the 8th. And sticking with Battlefield Park Elementary School, I'd like to thank Ms. Key, the librarian, and Ms. McHale of the principal, and all of their teachers for their ability to impart impeccable behavior amongst at least 100-plus pre-K through 2 children from the hours of 9:00 AM to approximately 9:50 AM one day a week ago, in order to listen to Mr. Ben Hatkey, an author, children's author, who lives in Front Royal, Virginia, and has written many, many children's books. And he does all the artwork, too, which I often found fairly astonishing, because he was a history major in college. And I was a history major in college, but my figures are stick figures. Where he is amazing with a pen. And he was amazing that day, and had all 100-plus of those children all in front of him in the cafeteria mesmerized. And so for the 50 minutes, he read two books to them, and then he talked about gestures. And he crafted out of pictures what the... Our language looks like today. And kind of played it back that our language came from pictures originally. And so he showed the kids how that was done in art form. And again, I can only think that he gives his dad credit for his artistic ability, because his dad was an architect. So, I guess that meshing of the DNA, the history, and the architectural skills or something happened to hit with him. So, he's very masterful in what he does. And the connections that he was making, again, reiterates what our teachers do every day and the connections that they do with our children. And you could have seen it by their behavior, and just... They were just into it, and it was just wonderful. And then my last comment, Mr. Chair, to give a little kudos to Mr. Dabold at Bell Creek Middle. And he had a... On Constitution Day, he had a civics challenge where he was awarding extra credit for kids that could recite the preamble in less than 10 seconds. And so I would obviously welcome anybody that wants to do that. We'll give you extra credit, right? But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Coach Ike. Any other board members with any comments? I'll make just a couple of real brief ones. First of all, I'm very proud to acknowledge that Ms. Gonawicka's classroom at Pearson's Corner Elementary School was transformed into an operating room. Students turned doctors, wore scrubs, masks, gloves, and helm hairnets while they solved problems using the Order of Operations. That's the kind of outstanding and teachers that we have, that we're fortunate to have, that could come up with these creative ideas. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that going on at Pearson's Corner. Also, I hope John Wheeler didn't leave. He did, I'm sorry, but... Oh, he's there. Okay, I'll just tell you that it is very impressive that your prospective members of the Atlee High School Girls Basketball Team volunteered their time and packaged 40 breakfast-go bags for housing families first, which helps families facing homelessness. And each bag consisted... Included a handwritten note of encouragement from your players. And so I just think that's outstanding, and I wanted to acknowledge you and your program for doing an outstanding job of going above and beyond what is expected. So, a job well done. Thank you, Coach. Thank you, John. And... You can do that tonight. And I guess, Ms. Berta, I don't know that you're gonna announce it, but we did have our first community involvement information last... This is Tuesday, yeah, last night at Beaver Dam Elementary School. So, that's... And Coach Ike already talked about the second one that's coming up. So, we had our first one for community input. And then the last one is, we're... I'm very fortunate to announce that our very own Dr. Kelly Webb was recently elected to the Northeast Conference on the Teaching of Foreign Languages Board of Directors, which is a high achievement and honor. Dr. Webb serves as an English-to-speakers-of-other-languageas instructional coach and welcome center liaison for Hanover County Public Schools, working with multilingual families and making connections. She shares her immense expertise in the area of teaching languages with the ESOL team and with many other Hanover County Public School teachers of English learners. So, it's another outstanding job. And so we take this opportunity to highlight those things that we don't get to talk about very often. So, thank you for indulging me on that. And with that, we will move on. Dr. Gill, I believe we are to our consent agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I did acknowledge Dr. Wheeler earlier, but I see that the proud principal of Patrick Henry High School, Mr. Martinez, is also with us.
He can't even see.
And so I certainly want to acknowledge his presence and support as well. Mr. Chairman, your consent agenda includes only two items this evening, the personnel items that you heard in closed session, as well as the religious exemptions that you heard in closed session. The recommendation is for approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gill. I would entertain a motion from a board member for approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Eichenberry, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Redd. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of pass... Of approval of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And now I believe we're up to public comment time. So, the school board conducts the public comment segment of its meetings to receive information from the general public on matters related to the Hanover County Public Schools. Per Board Policy 1-6.8, the total time allotted for school comment will not exceed 60 minutes. Speakers who wish to address the school board are requested to follow these guidelines. As each speaker is recognized by the chairperson, the speaker is asked to clearly state the speaker's name, their magisterial district, and the subject of the speaker's remarks. Speakers are asked to address their comments to the board and not to the audience. The board requests that the audience refrain from responding to speakers, comments with applause, or other audible expressions of approval or disapproval. Speakers are allotted three minutes to address the board. Each speaker's elapsed time will appear on the screen, and speakers will also receive notification from the vice chair when time is 30 seconds and then about to expire. And although the board does not permit the use of slideshows or other projected materials during this segment, speakers are invited to provide printed copies of such materials to the board. The board expresses its appreciation for the public's input and cooperation during this segment of the meeting. As we currently have 24 people signed up to speak tonight, I would entertain a motion to extend our public comment time by 15 minutes to allow all 24 to speak.
Mr. Chair, I move that we extend our public comment time for 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Eichenberry. Is there any discussion from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Eichenberry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is Suzanne Gallagher, followed by Colin Borders. Is Colin Borders here? Okay. You don't mind coming up and sitting up front and moves things along quicker for everybody? If those of you that are on deck could do that likewise, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Gallagher.
Thank you. Hi, ladies and gentlemen. So, today I'm here... My name is Suzanne Gallagher, I'm from the Henry District. Today I'm here, I'm reading a letter that was submitted to Hanover County Senior Staff by an overwhelming majority of the librarians from the middle and high school. So, this letter was sent in August after a training session. Said, "Thank you for taking the time to explain the school board policy 6-5.2 with us during our training. As professionals, we are fully committed to adhering to Hanover County's school board policies and requests. We understand that it is the will of the school board to start a de-selection process with a list of 125 books circulating in the community that was mentioned at a June school board meeting. We will reluctantly comply with the request to complete this task by going to booklooks.org and searching for a title from our section of that list. We are going... We are doing our best to complete our designated books as quickly as possible. However, we feel obligated to acknowledge that we have the following concerns about the assignment. In completing this task with the given procedures, we are not following the implementation steps that the school board outlined in Policy 6-5.2 that was explained during our training relating to the deselection in an ongoing and systematic process. These books have not been formally challenged and therefore do not deserve immediate action according to the process included in the implementation document. Starting with booklooks.org, a non-professional and biased source as our primary deselection tool goes against our professional training. And our professional training, most of us at the graduate level, tell us that books should not be judged using passages out of context. To make a decision about appropriateness, a work needs to be read in its entirety. This assignment goes against our formal training by state and ALA-accredited university programs and ethical practices as school librarians. Again, this was signed by a majority of librarians from the middle and high schools in the county. So, now I'll add my note. As a parent, I liked the existing opt-out policies for books and the existing challenge process that existed. I don't understand what is the point of creating this new policy if we're going to force librarians to do the dirty work for us instead of following the outlined process. They were threatened with insubordination if they did not follow the process, as was told in their training, in terms of just taking a book out. If you do believe that this new library policy, 6-5.2...
30 seconds.
Thank you. If you believe that is what the parents really want, then I do ask you to make these decisions publicly as a school board and stand by them, instead of asking the librarians to go behind the scenes and de-select books before they are challenged. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Colin Borders, followed by Kristen Stevens.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Colin Borders. I live in the Ashland Magisterial District, and I'm a sophomore at Atlee High School. I'm also a library assistant at my high school. I'm here tonight to talk about the book ban in an elected school board. Mass censorship of books is harmful. It may leave students ignorant of different viewpoints in the world around them, and may also put Hanover students behind students from other counties. Unlike Hanover County's current policy, Hemarico County's current policy and Hanover's previous policy both stay... policy both state that once a book is challenged, no matter the reason behind the challenge, it must go through a process with reviews from teachers, parents, librarians, administrators, and school board members before it can be removed. This process ensures that a majority of people with many different viewpoints must agree that said book is not suitable for school libraries. Henrico's policy is just one example of many more judicious review policies. Hanover County's current policy is that a single person can make a complaint about a part of a book and the complaint can go directly to the principal and then the school board. This process completely bypasses the literary professionals, librarians, and English teachers who are trying to deal with these issues. I think this is a great insult to these staff who have spent much of their adult lives pursuing and studying literacy education that our school board is doing the job of reviewing books instead of them. Many of our school board members seem to be saying, "No, we don't know how to perform or no, we know how to perform this part of your job better than you." Over the last few years, there's been much dialogue about parental rights. There's nothing more fitting to the rights of parents and guardians than being able to vote on the people who under current Hanover policy reviewed these books and whose final decision it is whether or not to remove these books. Residents of Hanover County should be able to vote on who's involved in implementing this policy or who might want to change this policy. That is one of the reasons why I believe that we should have an elected school board. Also, in relation to what was said earlier, we, the people of the United States of America, in order to form a perfect union, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare thereof, secure the blessings of liberty for our, um, secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity to ordinate and establish the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you for your time.
Very nice.
Thank you. Kristen Stevens, followed by Dottie Walsh. Is Dottie Walsh here? Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. You were hiding. All good. Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Kristen Stevens from McAndixville. The last time I spoke before this board, I read comments and concerns from Hanover County teachers and librarians regarding Policy 6-5.2. You'll hear more of those this evening from because HCPS staff still do not feel comfortable coming forward themselves for fear of retaliation in the schools, from the school board, from the parents, and members of the community, the latter as evidenced by more than one recent social media post. Tonight I return to reiterate my concern for lack of transparency from this board to the parents, teachers, and other stakeholders within this community. You will be appointing community members to the Library Materials Committee this evening. While I realize there is one representative from each district, I have more questions. How are they selected? Did they approach the school board? Or did you reach out to friends in the community to see if they were interested? Are there a set of qualifications or reasonable expectations for community member to be appointed to this committee? Because this feels like yet another example of the friend of school board and/or supervisor cronyism appointment that runs Hanover County. Continuing the theme of transparency, last month, the school board had a professional development workshop. Once again, off-site, at the cost of the taxpayers, when the meeting could have been held at Central Office where there is access to audio and video feed so interested members of the community could watch and listen. There was no detailed agenda posted, so I had to FOIA that information. And that you all received accolades from the Virginia School Board Association tonight when that that professional development meeting last month you were receiving training from the School Board Member Alliance amuses me. I did leave my whiteboard at home, but the connection between the School Board Member Association, Family Foundation, and its founding Freedoms Law Center is concerning. Additionally concerning, when one notices the lawsuit filed in Hanover County Circuit Court by a local citizen with support from the founding Freedoms Law Center against the Virginia School Board Association. Curiously, that lawsuit was filed shortly after that School Board Member Alliance met with you all. And lastly, Mr. May, you sent me a text. And more importantly, the librarians and administrators like the guidance on our book policy. It appears it is just you and a couple of your friends who have a problem with this policy. It appears, sir, that more than just a couple of my friends have a problem with this policy. And thanks to FOIA, we hear the librarians are not fans of this policy either. And my apologies, Mr. Whitley, if there was more transparency from this school board, perhaps you'd have your FOIA Fridays.
Thank you. Dottie Walsh, followed by Kristen Holtie.
Sorry, Dottie Walsh, Beaverdam District. And I've also talked about banned books previously, so I'm not going to bring it up, I guess this time because I feel like I can spin my wheels. Equity in Education aims to give every child the same opportunities and abilities to reach the full potential to help transform the unique gifts and talents and interests of every student so the failure of no longer predictable by student identity, racial, culture, economic, or any other social factor. Example, equality would mean giving every student in school a computer. In contrast, equity would recognize that not every student has the same resources at home. For example, some students may not be liable, have reliable internet home or a quiet space to work, so you adjust to help those in need to get the same end goal of other students. Teachers' relationships with students are of the greatest importance. Students traditionally underserved groups especially, positive relationships with teachers can provide supportive school environment where the students can overcome barriers and thrive. This also goes with our community who accepts all students, no matter their gender, religion, race, or their economic status. This is also important to help combat the high rate of suicides in Hanover schools, which I've always been so concerned about. This also is why these should be about students, teachers, and the community in our school system. We are limited to how many can speak within a 60-minute timeframe, of course, you added this time. The man that spoke before me at the June 2023 school board meeting about God made man and woman did not have anything to do about the Hanover school system. It takes away someone else's time to speak. It causes damage to our students and families in their community. Why allow this? How many on the school board have sat and talked with families of color and are LGG+ students? The Hanover NAACP had an open forum where students spoke about what they were going through and only one school board member showed up, one. There are those in the Hanover community are targeting these families, but there are those in this Hanover community have their backs. We support them and they are not alone. Just like my shirt says, "People of quality do not feel equity," and to add that statement, "Fear those that are different." I've been hearing the saying recently, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." This supports no action, no motivation, no change in sailing for mediocre results. If you live by this saying, there's no room for inventions, we'd still be getting around in a horse and buggy, use candles to light your house. We would also have no trains, airplanes, and other, and the list would go on. Why not look for ideas to make life better? We want to empower our students to grow their minds, create, and have a happy life. I hope we all want that. Like the Wizard of Oz, please use your brain for learning outside of your comfort zone. Use your heart for compassion for all students and families. Encourage to make the right choices, to take a stand for every student and family who only want their kids to be accepted for who they are and learned in a good environment.
30 seconds. Okay. Thank you. Kristen Holtie, followed by Amanda Cronenberg. Yes, yes, thank you.
My name is Kristen Holtie and I am a resident of Cold Harbor. This is Hanover County. This is not Henrico County, Chesterfield County, Lawden County. We are talking about Hanover County right now. I believe Hanover County is unique and daring and it's special in many ways. That's why a lot of people like to move here because of the good education and the safetiness. I have been speaking at the Hanover County School Board for the last two years and I'm always transparent, honest, and to the point. I truly appreciate all of you and what you have accomplished over the past two years. You have had to deal with a lot of disrespect, hateful, and just spiteful comments, and I just want to applaud you for what you have had to deal with. I have also, I have, I have an article in last week's McAndixville Local. It's called "The Political School Board's Reality Versus Rhetoric." It's under my maiden name, Kristen Altous. But it goes into detail as far as what the process is in appointing the school board members. There's a great deal involved. There's a lot of, there's applying, vetting, and it's not, you know, just a good old boy process as some people seem to think. It is very professional and I believe the Board of Supervisors and the school board are professional in many ways. I support the Hanover County School Board's adoption of the Virginia Board of Education's model policies and the proposed revised policy 7-1.7 restroom and locker room policy. I'd like to say that service on the school board requires much more than a passion to serve. Service on the school board requires skills and business experience that few possess. That is why prospective candidates for the school board are thoroughly vetted by the district supervisor and the rest of the Hanover Board of Supervisors. We want only the most qualified school board members serving in a position that pays only $8,000 a year. There's been a misconception as far as how much school board members are paid, but it's $8,000 a year. I would also like to comment that I have documentation as far as the books that have been removed. There is, it is, it's very explicit, the pornography in these books, and I see the reason for it them being removed. There's also a book that was removed, I can't even say the chapter because there are children in this room. So I applaud the school board. I respect you and I appreciate everything you've done over the last two, two years in protecting the children. That has been your focus, protecting the children, and I greatly appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Cronenberg, followed by Kiri Burden. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Amanda Cronenberg and I live in the Ashland District and have two school-age daughters. Last Thursday, when this meeting agenda came out, my oldest daughter, who's 15, created a survey that she sent to her friends and friends of friends and acquaintances in high school. She cannot be here tonight, but she wanted me to share the results of her survey with you. Question: If you were looking for sexually explicit material, what resource would you go to first? Do you know, not one of the dozens of respondents said "library book"? For reference, cellphone, which is totally allowed in school, was the answer for 61% and computer was 28%. Question: In what form have you been shown sexually explicit material? Can you believe that, again, no one said "library book"? I mean, listening to people talk, you would think that school librarians were handing out copies of Fifty Shades of Grey to kindergartners as they entered the building. Question: On a scale of 1 to 10, with 1 being totally comfortable and 10 being totally uncomfortable, what's your comfort level with using someone's preferred pronouns? The average rating? 1.77. So it seems like the kids at least are pretty darn comfortable referring to other students in the manner they prefer. Question: On a scale of 1 to 10, with 1 being totally comfortable and 10 being totally uncomfortable, how comfortable are you with trans kids in the bathrooms of the gender with which they identify? The average rating? 1.88. So maybe it's not the kids that have the issues. My daughter added a couple of free response questions to her survey in typical teenage fashion. Some were funny, some were vulgar, some were thoughtful and sincere, and others were heartbreaking. I'm going to share a few responses with you to the question, "What issues do you think the school board should have as their top priorities?" How disgusting our bathrooms are. The bus driver shortage. Actually fixing our bathrooms, which suck. Improving technology. Paying teachers more. Funding the arts. More college prep in schools earlier on. Expansion of curriculum for gifted classes and more electives. Addressing mental health issues. Better mental health programs with safe spaces. Free lunches. Vaping. Substance use. Students overdosing. A drug dealer at Oaknoll Middle School. Bullying and harassment. Addressing sexual misconduct. Protecting students from the threats of school shootings. And the following response sums up what I think a lot of kids and some parents are feeling. There's a lot of issues that should be at the top, but they will probably only look at the stuff that isn't even that important because that's how the world is with every problem. They focus on something else that's not really important instead of worrying and dealing with the actual problems.
30 seconds.
You've been focusing on banning books while schools must beg PTAs for funding to get adaptive playground equipment for special needs students. You've been focusing on oppressing trans students while two Hanover high schools are asking for donations for their food pantries for students who don't have enough to eat. My daughter and I would be happy to discuss the issues of importance that were reported in her survey if you would like. Now, I realize this is not a professional study that has been peer-reviewed, but neither has Book Looks, and you've approved that as a resource, so I figure that you'll accept this too. Thank you.
Thank you. Kiri Burden, followed by Ashley Borders. Is Ashley Borders here? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kiri Burdan. I am from the Beaverdam District. And I am reading a letter from a middle school language arts teacher in Hanover County Public Schools. From what I say from now on is her words. "I have a degree in English and over a decade of teaching experience. I have been publicly recognized by Hanover County as being outstanding in my field and am often called on to help mentor teachers or lead content-specific professional development. I say these things to lend weight to the words I am sharing today. My perspective is that of a dedicated education professional who has been recognized by our school system as such. The current book policy has caused me tears, frustration, and sleepless nights. Yes, I am disheartened that the countless hours I have spent reading, researching, and bargain shopping for appropriate books to add to my classroom library have been wasted. Yes, I am demoralized to hear that my expertise in my field is being discounted. Of course, I am overwhelmed with the requirement to inventory my classroom library, which has over 600 carefully selected titles that have now been evaluated against a new county-approved source. However, the distrust and suspicion that this policy has injected into our community has affected my ability to work cooperatively with parents, and that has been enough to make me think about leaving my profession. Here are some of the things I have to consider before speaking about a book choice with a student. What topics does the student's parents consider controversial? Can I trust the students when they tell me that their parents are okay with a particular book? I could call and ask the parents myself, but would that lead to a book being challenged because of a topic I didn't realize was controversial? If I give a student a book that has a swear word in it, will parents call the school board? If a book mentions sex, will I be labeled a porn pusher? I actually heard a parent of one of my former students call language arts teachers that very term during a school board meeting. I don't ever want to ever experience that again. So, do I just stop recommending books to students altogether? How can I do my job like this? How can I partner with parents to help kids learn to enjoy reading if the whole thing is fraught with suspicion? How did we get here? Why did we take parent choice away from the actual parents of my students and put it in the hands of the people who shoot the loudest? Not once in my entire career have I ever had a negative interaction with a parent over a book choice. I have had parents ask for alternate titles for students, and I obliged. I have had parents ask for guidance to find books that avoid specific topics, and I gladly compiled a list of suggested titles.
20 seconds.
I've always worked cooperatively with parents regarding book choices in the past. The current policy has changed all of that. It was built a culture of suspicion and fear between parents and teachers, and that erodes trust. I want to reemphasize that this, that it is the policy that is the heart of the distrust. The policy caused controversy that did not previously exist. It took conversations usually handled between parents, teachers, and administrators and twisted what had been civil discourse into the current political spectacle.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Borders, followed by Amelia Buchanan. Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ashley Borders. I live in the Ashland District. I'm here tonight to share the remarks of a dedicated Hanover school teacher. These are her words. "I am an HCPS elementary teacher and I'm writing about the impact of your book and library policy on my classroom. Over my 24-year career, I have carefully curated a wide range of roughly 1,400 wonderful and engaging books for my students to read. Those books are now sitting in my basement due solely to your new book and library policy. I have a library now of books in my classroom for my students, and it includes the collection that the county has provided me in my 20 years here, which amounts to a paltry 80-ish books. Because of your policy, my classroom library has gone from 1,400 to 80 items. I took my collection home. Here's why. I took my collection home because your drastic policy change remains unfunded. According to the policy, teachers are required to catalog each and every title in their library, including the number of copies, as well as a minimum of two professional reviews for each title. In addition, we are required to notify our admins if any books are removed from our collections due to damage or old age. We must also update the catalog for each and every new title we add to our collections. I am a 10-month employee. I already work an obscene number of unpaid hours for you. I will not be giving my time to execute this draconian policy. When I am made a 10 and 1/2 or 11-month employee and given a device and the app that will catalog my review and review my collection, I will consider bringing my library back. I took my collection home because I'm not trusted by my employer. I have a bachelor's degree in early education and early childhood education, as well as a master's degree. I have taught for 24 years. I have taken several courses regarding the selection of children's literature. I know how to choose books that are appropriate for the age of my students. Yet, you don't trust me to make decisions based on the expertise I've gained through my education and career. I took my collection home because you don't understand. You do not understand the scope of a library, of a classroom library, nor how many high-quality picture books are published each year. You do not understand that classroom libraries can easily add 10 new high-interest books a month through the use of Scholastic Book Clubs. You do not understand You do not understand that you haven't given us the time or tools to accomplish this. I took my collection home because the solution for this additional work and cost you have created has been pushed onto the backs of volunteers. I will not expect volunteers to scan my books, use their own devices and time to employing your ignorance-informed policy in my classroom.
Twenty seconds.
I took my collection home, and now I have 80 books for my class. Thank you.
Thank you. Amelia Buchanan, followed by Marie Dyer.
Hi, my name is Amy Buchanan. I have resided in the Chickahominy area of Hanover for over 30 years. I'm a graduate of Hanover County Public Schools, a parent of Hanover County Public Schools' children, and a former public school educator. I'm here today to address a matter of utmost importance, the impact of book bans and related policies on our teachers and students. Over the past few years, we have witnessed an alarming increase in teacher separations in our district. Board docs list teacher separations every month. Analyzing the past six years of teacher separations, the trend line has shown a significant increase in teacher separations in the past three years. While the student enrollment trend line has decreased over the past six years, teachers' separations have increased at a higher rate. As a member of the community and former county employee, I have observed many qualified and award-winning educators leaving our schools for other nearby school districts or leaving the profession altogether. It is crucial to consider how some of the policies and decisions made by this board may have contributed to this concerning trend. Why are teachers leaving to go to other school districts? What about your board has contributed to teachers leaving Hanover County? Most recently, this summer, you gave yourselves unilateral authority to remove any book from any school at any time for any reason. From my understanding, you made this decision in a silo, not including experts in the field of library science that you employ, your school librarians. Our school librarians are masters in the field of education, holding master degrees in library sciences or certification by completing the required master-level coursework. Not including them in matters of book selection is like not letting doctors in the decision-making process for medical treatments. Additionally, one should wonder what prompted this extreme policy revision when you had an existing policy in place. According to information obtained in the Freedom of Information Act, in the past four years since 2019, there have only been five books in our school system officially challenged using the pre-existing policy. Of the most recent books that have been banned in our school libraries, none of them went through the existing policies. Policies are best when involving all the stakeholders and when given utilizing expert advice. Why are you not following your own policies and procedures? Who's to say you're not going to change a policy or procedure a month from now? Furthermore, the constant threat of book bans and censorship has created an atmosphere of fear and self-censorship among our educators. They should not have to second-guess their choices in a classroom for fear of retribution. These professional educators hold degrees and credentials that allow them to create creative and dynamic learning environments for our students.
Thirty seconds.
The Hanover Promise says, "We are empowered learners, responsible citizens, globally-engaged communicators, and resilient individuals." Your unspoken policies of teacher censorship do not uphold these values. Teachers are told not to speak out. Teachers are told not to advocate. Teachers are told not to comment. I want Hanover County Public Schools to be able to walk the walk and talk the talk. Our children deserve the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Is everything okay? Mr. Chair, I'd like a minute.
Yes.
I'd like to comment on Ms. Buchanan's comments that, over the course of the last seven weeks...
Hold on, Ms. Dyer. Please stop the damn, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. May and I have met with approximately 15, 16 schools, most of them elementary, and we've yet to have a teacher refrain or feel threatened, have a discussion with us freely. Excuse me, I'm having a comment. You had your comment, Tom.
Go ahead.
And we got a lot of very positive feedback about things that they don't agree with. We've heard from principals, the same thing, things that they might not agree with, and we're very receptive to that. So when you're making comments that there's fear of retribution, it's not coming from...
Okay.
Us?
Okay, let's continue on. No, we'll continue on, Ms. Dyer. No, hold on, no, no ma'am.
You had your time.
You had your time.
And that was my time. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dyer?
Ms. Dyer, followed by Charlie Hoag.
My name is Mary Dyer, and I'm a Mechanicsville District resident. In regards to the book policy, it sends the message that you do not care about our skilled educators and specialists. While you may have met with elementary school teachers or specialists, at the secondary level, there, there is really strong need. It seems like you want control and no checks or balances. There's no one on the list of names that you have come up with for the Material Review Committee who has any education or experience with curriculum, library, English. Have any of the board members gone to their school librarians, other than the elementary in their districts, to observe or ask the actual librarians? How is this going? What does this look like in the real world, day-to-day? And then taken that feedback and said, hey, we need to make these changes? You are beholden to your special interest in whatever god you claim to serve, serving gods of judgment, serving gods of political groups, like the Family Foundation? It is time that our children are the ones served, even the ones who don't look, speak, or worship like you. If Christianity is the basis for your policymaking, then we have yet to see it. There is nothing Christ-like being done by this board, and there hasn't been in many years. Our kids and dedicated educators deserve so much better. It is a shame that your legacy will be eclipsed by the decisions you have and continue to make on this board, but you reap what you sow.
Thank you. Charlie Hoag, followed by Marnie Klump. Is Marnie Klump here? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlie Hoag, and I'm from the Ashland District. And my remarks are based, are, are related to elected school boards. And first of all, I'd like to congratulate the board on, on the recent data points that have been collected regarding Hanover schools in general and compared to the other counties relating to the points that the kids have scored regarding math, et cetera.
Mr. Chair, pull your mics up.
Y'all have a lot to do with that as well, so that's very much appreciated. So, in a seminal book published 30 years ago, Polit, Politics, Markets, and American Schools, John Chubb and Terry Mo argued that locally-elected school boards are not the most effective and efficient approach to educating America's youth. Chubb and Mo warned that institutions of democratic control, meaning locally-elected school boards, often fail in carrying out their core missions. Instead, empowering vocal and well-organized adults at the expense of the educational needs and interests of students who do not get a vote in local elections. If school boards are asked to choose between a policy that improves student achievement and one that benefits teachers, the pressures of seeking reelection perversely encourage school board members to prioritize adult employees over the education of students. These dynamics are likely amplified in large urban districts where teachers' unions tend to enjoy stronger organization and access to greater political resources. In short, elections divert valuable time from students. Elections are expensive. Elections attract teacher union control. Elections ensure well-organized groups over, are overrepresented. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie Klump, followed by Sarah Polter-Bridges. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marnie Klump. I'm in the Beaver Dam District. I'm going to read a letter from an educator from Hanover County Public Schools. As an educator, every day I encounter situations that do not align with my values, but I tolerate them because I understand that we are all different and that diversity in thinking, feeling, and learning makes for a positive school environment. Though I am not religious, I am silent during public prayer. Though I believe conflict can be, can be resolved calmly, I continue to help students and parents who are distressed and dysregulated. Though I am not conservative, I will help the student with the Trump sticker on their Chromebook with as much patience and kindness as I'd help the next. This is what we sign up for when we take a job in education. We commit to working with every student despite our own beliefs and values. We understand that in order for students to learn, they have to feel safe, respected, and heard. It's basic brains, brain science. We are clearly not in education for ourselves. We are here for the students, every single student. So I'm curious as to why we would even consider adopting policies that intentionally cause harm to our students. In a county that takes pride in student success and achievement, why would you choose practices that hurt, alienate, segregate, and dysregulate one of the most vulnerable populations we serve? How will we navigate these incidents of bullying? Yes, bullying. Deadnaming and misgendering students is by definition bullying. By doing so, you are seeking to cause harm to vol, to a vulnerable population. I'm also curious about the selective moment of free speech that you intend to grant us. As employees, we've been cautioned not to express our views, opinions, and politics openly. Last December, I watched as custodians scraped Safe Space stickers from teachers' windows and doors, teachers who are no longer with us because of this action. Did you not consider our freedom of speech, then? I asked someone to read my statement tonight, not because I am afraid to speak up or fearful of retribution. Instead, what I truly fear is that because of this divisive time in which we're living that you, as a school board, are actively contributing to, there will be a student or family out there who might see my face or hear my words and no longer view me as someone they can rely on. The idea that a student may truly need assistance and not be permitted to seek it is heartbreaking. Yes? With policies like those you are proposing in place, you're creating an unsafe learning environment for all students and an unsafe working environment for all staff. I hope you will consider these concerns as you make your decision tonight. I did want to say that I recently took the citizenship test in the United States to become a citizen. One of the questions that was on there is, what is freedom of religion? You can practice any religion or not practice a religion.
Twenty-five seconds.
Religion needs to stay out of the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Polter-Bridges, followed by Patricia Hunter-Jordan. Ms. Jordan here. Is Lindsay Paulson here? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Bridges. I live in the Beaver Dam District. I have two student, two kids who have been students in Hanover County Public Schools since kindergarten. They're now in middle and high school. This past weekend, I had the honor of representing the Hanover County NAACP at the Equality Virginia Commonwealth Dinner. The Richmond Convention Center ballroom was filled with all kinds of people, people of many colors, genders, backgrounds, ages, faiths, many, and many different life experiences. The one thing missing from that room was hate. There was only love in that room. When I walk into a space like that, my body feels at ease. I am no longer hypersensitive to my surroundings. I'm no longer plotting my exit. I relax. I stop fidgeting. I breathe deeper, and the time seems to fly by. You may feel that way in this room, in our schools, at school-sponsored events, the homecoming parades this past Friday, perhaps. I do not feel safe here, in these public places in Hanover, even outdoors, nor do many of the people here tonight, nor do their kids who attend Hanover County Public Schools. Despite their hypersensitivities, despite their anxious minds, despite the fact that they are merely kids in a world where grownups are supposed to protect them, they put themselves out there. They try out for school teams, hoping and praying, like all other kids, that they are good enough to make the cut. They are so very brave. It does not matter how much they practiced, how much they prayed, how hard they worked to make the cut. That child will never make the cut in this board's eyes, because the body part that child uses to go to the bathroom is what this board decides which team those kids belong on. It makes no sense. You see, when you repeatedly make decisions that purposefully indirectly harm students you are entrusted to protect, you and anyone who is emboldened by your harmful decision, decisions are endangering Hanover families. By targeting transgender kids, prohibiting them from using the bathroom of the gender they identify with, prohibiting them from playing gender-segregated sports and other activities, along with kids of the gender they identify with, you are creating harmful solutions in search of a problem. The tail wagging the dog, as they say. These efforts to restrict the rights of transgender students are not motivated by privacy concerns. They are motivated by fear. Fear of what you do not know or understand, fear of something that doesn't conform to your world. But we are in your world, and the world is much larger than Hanover County, and we are wonderfully made. There is no evidence of an increase in public safety occurrences in any of the hundreds of jurisdictions that have extended legal protection, protection to transgender people. However, the evidence is clear, if you can't use the bathroom, you can't fully participate in school, and it impacts your health and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay Paulson, followed by Rita Dowling.
Hi, I am Lindsay Paulson. I reside in the South Anna District. Today, I will be reading a letter from a high school librarian. Hanover County Public Schools has long held that our schools are a direct reflection of the diverse community in which we serve. We are proud to be a part of the fabric of our community and take very seriously our responsibility to educate students and to create graduates that will be responsible and productive citizens, caring neighbors, effective coworkers, and future business and civic leaders. This is a statement posted on our school's website, on our county school system's website. Unfortunately, our employees are struggling to provide those learning opportunities for students to achieve these outcomes. The school board's vote in June 2023 created a domino effect. Books were demanded to be pulled from the shelves of our high school libraries. More titles were threatened by way of a small group of community members. New school and classroom library acquisitions and deselection procedures were hastily drafted at the school board office for schools to implement without any input from the county's highly-qualified librarians or classroom teachers. And most tragically, the students are impacted. New book purchases have been delayed for school libraries due to the newest acquisition procedures. The county's beloved Reading Olympian books are delayed in ordering. Classroom library orders that were requested last spring are being placed on hold. Hanover librarians take their jobs very seriously. We value reading, learning, critical thinking, and inquiry. We also respect the rights of families or individuals to choose what they would like to read or not read. Long before this newest attack on the freedom to choose books to read, librarians in Hanover were selecting books that were a good fit for the diverse communities. The librarians were also open to working with parents to ensure that the books their child were reading were a good fit. School librarians still do this today. We are here for our community. We are here to provide all students learning opportunities through books and information. We are part of the Hanover Promise to create empowered learners, globally-engaged communicators, resilient individuals, and responsible citizens. Reading, thinking critically, and writing are powerful tools to build each of these components in Hanover graduates. Libraries are essential resources for growing readers, critical thinkers, and writers.
Thirty seconds.
We should be considered assets when creating new policies and procedures that will become part of our professional responsibilities. We are the unheard voices fighting to ensure all students provided access to the tools they need for their future. Hanover librarians, under the will of the school board, are required to implement new purchasing procedures that are estimated to add almost 40 hours of working time annually. The review process for challenged book goes against our professional training to consider a book in its entire context by reading the full book. We need to let the librarians have a voice.
Thank you. Rita Dowling, followed by Grant Cronenberg.
Hi, I'm Rita Dowling. I live in Mechanicsville. I'm reading from yet another librarian. As a Hanover County Public Schools librarian, I am disappointed and saddened at the state we find our county in this fall. This divisiveness must stop. The school board has said that they want to focus on the kids. Teachers and librarians want to focus on the kids, too. Since we all want the, what is best for our students, let's try to focus on our commonalities instead of our differences. Let's try to put aside political views. Books and librarians should not be political. As Hanover County teachers, we are repeatedly reminded that instruction is the number-one goal. You may not think of school librarians as teachers, but we are. We actively teach Hanover students important lessons about many topics... We actively teach Hanover students important lessons about many topics, including how to choose the right book and how to evaluate information to determine if it is trustworthy or not. Unfortunately, the new book policy is so cumbersome, it takes time away from this essential instruction. Teachers and librarians are spending our time jumping through hoops to have new books approved and current books removed, and that takes valuable time away from planning for instruction and teaching our students these important lessons they need to learn. In August, secondary librarians were asked to start their de-selection process by reviewing the list of books circulating in the community to determine if they contain sexually explicit content. Many of the books on this list do have some sexual content, but are age-appropriate for high school students, and that age-appropriateness was not even considered. Those books are on the chopping block anyway. As many books recommended for young adult students and currently in our high school libraries do include some mention of sex or sexuality, where will this de-selection process stop? Calling it de-selection doesn't change what it is: censorship. Also, the fact that the school board members have repeatedly called the books they voted to remove and other books with sexually explicit content pornography is one of the most discouraging parts of this whole ordeal. When looking at the definition of pornography, intent is key. Merriam-Webster defines pornography as "the depiction of exotic behavior," as in pictures or writing, intended to cause sexual excitement. None of these books were written with that intent.
Thirty seconds.
Sexual content does not make something pornographic. In closing, in implementing this new book policy, we are taking valuable time away from instruction, and we are removing books that are, in fact, appropriate for high school students, all because our school board has incorrectly interpreted both the definition of pornography and the intent of the Virginia law related to parent notification for instructional materials. Let's put our differences aside and think rationally about this policy. Let the teachers and librarians do what we are trained to do.
Thank you.
Teach students and provide access to age-appropriate materials for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grant Cronenberg, followed by Michael Burden.
Good evening. My name is Grant Cronenberg. I live in the Ashland District, and I'm the father of daughters who are in 10th grade and 4th grade. I'm here to speak tonight about the overcrowding at Cool Spring Elementary. The school's population is currently over 800, which is about forty students overcapacity, and Cool Spring is projected to be about 150 students overcapacity in a few years. Now, I know that the current student population does not meet the definition for overcrowding in the school regulations because the population doesn't exceed capacity by more than 20%. But the school is, in fact, overcrowded. First, if capacity is X and the population is more than X, then common sense says that the school is overcrowded. More importantly than that, however, is the proof of overcrowding is obvious if you walk around the school. For instance, my daughter's music class is currently being run out of a converted janitor's closet. That is overcrowding. Also, because of the exorbitant number of students, there are times P classes have to run two at a time. That means you have fifty students in one gymnasium. That is overcrowding. Additionally, the school has only two school counselors and one person to serve as the school's registrar, despite the explosion in population, not to mention more to come in the future. This is basic unfairness relative to the population and staffing at other elementary schools. Now, this issue frankly was apparent, I think, to all a year ago when we saw the population numbers at Cool Spring and noted the significant development that has taken place along Atlee Station Road the last few years. Meanwhile, an adjacent elementary school is over 100 below its capacity. Now, what was the proactive response by the school board when multiple large subdivisions that would feed into Cool Spring were approved? To my knowledge, nothing. What was the response by the school board when it was apparent at least a year ago that Cool Spring would be significantly overcapacity in just a few years? Again, it seems nothing. Now, we do have a plan now to install temporary learning cottages. So rather than taking proactive steps and making some long-range planning to better distribute the student population, given the large influx of new students to the Atlee Station Road area, the school board's plan is to spend money to create temporary accommodations, money that could have gone to other needs if the school board was looking ahead and considering the basics of running a school district and providing the best educational environment for our children. Instead, for the last year-plus, the school board has spent much of its limited time on anti-trans policies and book banning. I know those issues meet with the ideological interests of a good number of you on this board, as well as some recently departed members of this board.
Thirty seconds.
And with the most fervent interests of a segment of parents, but those actions are not relevant to creating the best learning environment for students. The school board's slow response to overcrowding at Cool Spring does make me wonder if the school board was actually independent from the board of supervisors and directly accountable to the citizens of Hanover County, would the school board have raised these issues? Would it have asked for more funding? Instead of such independence, though, the school board members at this moment are beholden as political appointees to the supervisors who appoint them, but perhaps, hopefully, that will be changing soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Burden, followed by Mark Killingstad.
Hi again, Michael Burden, Beaver Dam District. My wife spoke and read the anonymous words of a Hanover County Public Schools teacher and didn't quite get to finish, so I will finish and then add my own thoughts because she likes when I always do that at home. I want to reemphasize, so continuing the letter, I want to reemphasize that it is the policy that is at the heart of this distrust. The policy caused controversy which did not previously exist. It took conversations usually handled between parents, teachers, and administrators and twisted what had been civil discourse into the current political spectacle. Please, please reconsider the current book policy. We have tried it, and not only is it not working, but it is detrimental to our students, their parents, and our teachers. Thank you. So that's her remarks, and I thought they were more important than what I could have to say. I used to be previously a teacher in Texas. I was a bilingual elementary teacher. And on one occasion, I was upset about something that was going on in the district, and I went to the school board meeting, and I got up in front of the school board, and I spoke. And I spoke as directly and clearly and vociferously and accusatorily as any of the parents here at my school board, whom I served as a teacher. And it never once entered my mind that I should do so anonymously because I trusted that my school board would see the love of my students that brought me there and the concern for them. Apparently, that's not present in Hanover County. Our teachers don't feel that way. I haven't been to every school board meeting, like some of the parents here that are perhaps more devoted than me or have more time, but I've never heard of a current teacher coming and voicing concerns and opposition to what the board is doing. And Mr. Eichenberry responded to one of our commenters, saying, "Well, that's not our problem," or "Well, that's not because of what we're doing," or something of that nature. And that's not leadership. That's not stepping up and taking accountability and saying, "Goodness heavens, no one gives us feedback publicly. They're concerned." Having comment after comment read anonymously by your teachers and librarians about policies that are giving them headaches and grief and making them consider leaving their profession that they love and the students that they serve, that should be terrifying, and you should be proactive about finding ways to get teachers and librarians and administrators to feel confident and safe to come and voice their concerns because we want to hear from them, too, as parents, and this is the best forum to do that.
Thirty seconds.
The book banning policy, it's been said. I don't have anything to add on the book banning policy. It's just, we trust our students in the hands of our teachers, and we look for the school board to trust them the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Killingstad, followed by Charlie Waddell.
Raise the mics up. I really don't think I need to do that, but if you want me, I will.
No, you're fine.
Okay, thank you. Mark Killingstad, Chicago, Michigan. Thank you. I had a whole bunch of other remarks, but we're shifting gears here. All right, I wasn't able to come to the last meeting because we had some family stuff going on, so here I am now. Two months ago, after the public comment session, Mr. Redd expressed his concerns stemming from conversations with teachers that they wouldn't have time to provide an inventory of books that they used to teach from. He further stated words to the effect that teachers didn't want to have to get approval for every book they used to teach from. Now, as a professional educator and course developer during a previous career, one does not simply teach from whatever source they want to. It has to be approved and directly support the approved curriculum. I find it upsetting that Mr. Redd brought this to our attention in the way that he did and not addressed the potential use of unapproved books directly to Dr. Gill as a policy issue since he is a superintendent. I am also concerned that no one on the board saw this as a problem that needed to be addressed. I won't even get into the discussion on the problems with the curriculum because I've only got three minutes and we're losing time. Moving on. I've listened to a lot of people so far tonight say that nobody in this room, other than a professional teacher that works for Hanover, has any idea what's going on or should have any say in what our kids teach or learn. So I'm going to throw a little bit of education for them. I find it repugnant that a government employee of the school system thinks that they are the only ones qualified to teach or develop curriculum. Since the teachers and their union don't understand where policy changes came from, then allow me to educate. The policy changes that are going through the systems right now are a result of parents waking up during the COVID policies that showed us what them, the professional educator, was indoctrinating our kids with. We saw it, we got fed up, and we started pushing back. The problem is now, they've been playing games in the dark for so long that now it's being exposed what they're doing, and they don't like us calling them to the carpet. We're having you, as the board, make them do their job. I also take issue with any employee that says, "I'm not going to do what I'm supposed to do because I don't like the policy change." In the world that I grew up in, you told your boss that? Guess what? Here's your slip. Have a nice day. Get to packing. And if the union's stopping it, well, I'm sure there is an avenue to go through the union to hand them their slip and get them to packing. Now, to my other comments, oh my God, I don't have enough time. Anyway.
Thirty-five seconds.
Your student code of conduct, it's a piece of junk. You need to rewrite it. You need to go through it, and you need to start sticking by it and holding people accountable to it, okay? Dress code, oh my God, it doesn't matter, male, female, they're all violating it, and no one's doing anything about it, okay? School events, I'm sorry, but when a 1940s one-piece bathing suit covers up more than what some of the girls were wearing at a homecoming dance? Please, come on now. I understand young men are supposed to act appropriately, but when you're showing your wares in the way that you are, you're going to get some problems by some young men that weren't raised right.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thanks for the time.
Charlie Waddell, followed by Connie Piper.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Gill, members of the school board staff, parents, fellow citizens, I'm Charlie Waddell, live in the Henry District. I see the First Amendment is alive and well tonight. I bring you a breath of fresh air. I'm here to speak on two subjects. The first is one of my favorites, the NJROTC program, and you met some of the students in Lee Davis, the Mechanicsville, and the Patrick Henry. They're the best and the brightest. Last week, I had the opportunity to sub for one of the instructors, and during those instruction periods, they had the chance to meet with Staff Sergeant Allen, an Army recruiter. After this presentation, I had the chance to talk with Staff Sergeant Allen about the ASVAB scores, which are the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery, and I asked him about the scores of the Mechanicsville High School students, the Hanover students, and how they compared to the other schools in the region. Sergeant Allen, Staff Sergeant Allen, told me that they are eager to recruit from Mechanicsville High School, eager to recruit from Hanover because we have, excuse me, I get emotional because I know these kids. These are the best and the brightest. They're our future. They try hard. I bring this to your attention to recognize the success of the NJROTC program and to cast a spotlight on Hanover schools because we are a success. We have graduates, a high graduation rate. We have graduates that get to their first choice of schools and scholarships. The ASVAB scores prove it, and as the gentleman earlier said, stats don't lie. Bravo Zulu to all of you, including the staff, for excellence. Second reason I'm here tonight is to comment on the two proposed policy changes that come under tonight's agenda category L. The policy on restroom and locker room policy and the extracurricular activities. I urge you to ratify those policy statements. I'm aware of the government limitations that you operate under on these. I'm also amazed and somewhat appalled by the state of affairs in today's society with all the gender dysphoria. They need to even have policies addressing where and who can use which restroom and how to differentiate between who can participate in women's sports is frankly counterintuitive. The need to even have policies to respond to gender dysphoria is distracting from the stated mission of any academic institution.
Thirty seconds.
Those who do demand special privileges and accommodations, and they have no interest in academics. It's merely a social agenda that has no place in schools. Every school should focus on teaching core subjects, career development, and academic success for every student. Parents need to be involved in their students' academic life. Children are not fully mature, which is one of the reasons of the age majority is 18. Children often have desires that may not be in their best interest. Part of the parent's job is to sometimes protect their children from themselves. A parent's job is to navigate those difficult decisions. They should not have to negotiate with the school board for those policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Piper, followed by Kimberly Thurston.
Hello, my name is Connie Piper, and I'm a parent and resident of the Beaver Dam District. Some of the decisions that have been made by this board lately caused me to shake my head and wonder what the motivating factors for the decisions are. Whether intentional or not, it seems to come down to privilege. The Britannica Encyclopedia defines privilege as "an advantage that others do not have." Here are a few recent examples. You appoint a naming committee for the new elementary school, and then you completely disregard their suggestion in favor of your own name. Your privilege is showing. You dissolve the Equity Advisory Committee. Again, your privilege is showing. You choose to hold your work sessions at various country clubs. Your privilege is showing. You completely rewrite the library policy, the request for reconsideration policy, and give yourself sole authority to remove or add any materials to school and classroom libraries without actually talking to the librarians and teachers who have specialized training in book selection and who will be directly impacted by your changes. Your privilege is showing. You remove nineteen books from all school and classroom libraries without even reading the books. Your privilege is showing. Of the nineteen books that have been banned so far, five of the nineteen, roughly 26%, are by Jewish authors, and six of the nineteen, roughly 32%, are authors who identify as LGBTQ. Your privilege is showing. You create a policy that allows for the removal of books from all school and classroom libraries without anyone, including the person lodging the complaint, to actually read the book. Your privilege is showing. There is no requirement for the members of the Appointed Library Committee to have any educational or library background, even though it is this committee that will decide if books are removed from school and classroom libraries. Your privilege is showing. You can't see that removing books that reflect students' identities, provide opportunities for imaginative rehearsals, and help to heal trauma might not hurt kids but might actually protect them. Your privilege is showing. You waste thousands of taxpayer dollars paying salaries of teachers, librarians, principals, and school board office staff to complete a mountain of paperwork as a part of the new book selection and de-selection process. Your privilege is showing. You are causing teachers and librarians to take time away from serving their students to fill out a time-consuming and cumbersome spreadsheet every time they add or remove books from the school and classroom libraries. Your privilege is showing. You require teachers and librarians to use a known biased website, BookLooks.org, as part of the selection and de-selection process. You don't believe that you are banning books because parents can buy those books for their students if they wish for them to read them.
Thirty seconds.
Your privilege is showing. You remove the parental rights of all parents to best decide what materials are suitable for their children by listening to the opinions of a few parents. Your privilege is showing. You will likely disregard my comments tonight, as you have those of the multitudes who have previously contacted you, because you don't believe in privilege. Your privilege is showing. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Thurston, followed by Dana Fox. Is Dana Fox here?
She's here.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Thurston, and I reside in the Mechanicsville District. Tonight, I'm not here to talk about any of the controversial topics that have been talked about this evening. I'm here to bring to you a safety concern that I've had since the beginning of the school year, and that is about our crossing guards that we have at our schools. And I can only speak about the three crossing guards that are at my children's schools, but they have been missed. Find someone to fill those roles because there have been so many near misses at Bell Creek Middle School and Mechanicsville High School. It is petrifying for me to drive down Lee Davis Road and watch these students try to cross from CVS or the dentist office where their parents drop them off, and they try to cross. Fix it. I don't care if you have to hire more people, if you have to get the sheriff's office involved. Find someone to do this because it is despicable that you guys have not taken care of that already. I do want to give a huge shout out to the I do want to give a huge shout out to the Transportation Department staff worker that showed up at Laura Meadow to do the job there. He did a wonderful job, I was a little concerned on some mornings that I thought he was going to get hit because he did not have a whistle and parents or drivers did not pay any attention to him, but huge shout out to him for showing up and doing that. I received a text message from a parent in the Henry District tonight whose child received a concussion while she was in school, and she is an athlete in one of our schools, and she has been put under protocol for the concussions. And she has to now travel to the next high school up to get to an athletic director. The request from her is that we find the time in the budget process to hire more athletic directors. I know I didn't sign up for the budget comment, but if we could get even a part-time athletic trainer to be at our middle schools with our students, I think that that would be a huge help. And again, on that note that I did not sign up for the budget time, please allow for more time in the budget process for parental involvement. I know that it's a busy time in the winter when we all are going through that process, but more parental involvement and citizen involvement is always a good thing, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Thurston, before you leave, you said athletic director, you meant athletic trainer.
I'm sorry, yes, athletic trainer.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure because I got really confused, thank you.
Dana Fox, followed by Andrea Casey, okay, thank you.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Gill. My name is Dana Fox and I'm a resident of the Beaver Dam District, I also live in the heart of Beaver Dam. I'm a mother to one Patrick Henry student, two Beaver Dam Elementary students, and two more who will be attending Beaver Dam in the next couple of years. I serve on the Hanover CTE Advisory Committee and I am the Beaver Dam Elementary PTA Past President and current Vice President of Advocacy. I'm here tonight to advocate for a new school building for Beaver Dam Elementary and not just a renovation. Last night, I had the pleasure of attending our first community engagement session about the upcoming renovation for Beaver Dam. I'm excited for the project, but I have some very serious concerns. I'm encouraging this board to revisit the plan for Beaver Dam to be the construction of a new building, not just a renovation. All of the other schools in the same CIP are slated for a new building except Beaver Dam. On the Hanover County School Board website is a statement of equity, and I quote, "The school division is committed to taking deliberate action to match all students with the resources, tools, and supports they need to maximize their potential. How is it equitable for other projects to be completely new facilities? What does that say to our staff, families, community, and most importantly, our students, that our school isn't deserving of a brand-new building? The Western Corridor students will move from one aging facility to another, which is Liberty Middle, and then to another, which is Patrick Henry, while other students in the county see at least one school in their K-12 journey that was built after 1980. My children are walking the same halls their grandparents walked, that's not nostalgia, that's sad. Where is the equity? To go back to your website quote, you need to take deliberate action. I am the chief operating officer in a neighboring school division, my background is in construction management, and my career is focused in K-12 facilities. I'm not simply speaking as a mom or a PTA board member, I'm speaking from years of experience and as a content expert. Information shared last night indicated that the project would run the course of essentially three summers, which mean completion is likely for fall 2026. We can build a new school building in that time. Also shared last night was the 15 sanitary lines and other challenges that lie ahead. Those are just what is known, and I imagine there will be much more uncovered that will be costly. Add to that the long-term cost to still maintain a building that will be a hybrid of ages. We have the space to build new while teaching and learning continues in the old building. This nearly eliminates what will be significant interruptions for students and staff over multiple school years. I implore this board to please reconsider the project plan for Beaver Dam Elementary. It is early enough in the process that the current budget can be allocated towards a new building. Based on our enrollment of 314 students, which is a third of the new Ashland Elementary, we could potentially use a smaller prototype and likely wouldn't have a budget increase.
Thirty seconds.
Beaver Dam and our community flies under the radar, and we like it that way, quite honestly. Usually, the only time other folks in the county hear about us is because Mr. Whitley blames us for the snow days. I do not want our opportunity for a new school building to fly under the radar. We should not be the only building getting just a renovation. BES also deserves the best, thank you.
Thank you. And Andrea Casey.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Honorable Board Members, I am Andrea Casey, I'm the president of the South Anna District, and I'll be speaking in support of the Governor's Model Policies and on behalf of the Hanover County Republican Committee. We reiterate and support Hanover County School Board's codification at a minimum to the Governors and the VDOEs published versions of the 2023 Model Policies on the privacy, dignity, and respect for all students and parents in Virginia's public schools, as allowed by the Code of Virginia. In doing so, we request the following article, as outlined in Appendix 1 in the sample policy, be given special attention. Referencing Article 3, Item G, "The Established Policy for Student Participation in Sex-Specific School Activities and Events and Use of Facilities", as Vision 2 states, "Where state or federal law requires schools to permit transgender students to share sex-segregated facilities, such as bathrooms and locker rooms, with students of the opposite sex, parents should be given the right to opt their child out of using such facilities, and the child should be given access to alternate facilities to promote that child's privacy and safety. Given this provision, for the sake of transparency and consideration for the parents and children, we respectfully request that all parents of Hanover County Public Schools be given specific notification of the above child opt-out policy, along with appropriate required opt-out document for their execution if they should desire to do so. We very much appreciate your efforts and actions in this very serious manner, and I do thank you for all of your dedication and hard work for putting our students and our community first and making it such a successful school system here in the state of Virginia, thank you."
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that ends our public comment that had signed up, and now we turn our attention to the budget, public comment period. We have two people that have signed up, Brennan Neal, Ms. Brennan Neal, and Cece Bishop.
Wow, are y'all gonna tag team talking, this'll be great.
We'll be speaking together. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Dr. Gill, I am Cece Bishop, I am president of the HEA.
And I am Brennan Neal, I am president of the Hanover Professional Educators, HPE.
So, our remarks this evening don't constitute a formal budget proposal. Once more, our associations will survey our members later in November and return to you in December with our 2024-25 budget presentation, where we may ask you to consider additional requests, but these are our preliminary comments. Our associations are grateful to the school board and to Dr. Gill for this year's 7% salary increase, as well as other good faith efforts to reward Hanover's hard-working employees. However, teachers are concerned about the continuing impact of inflation on our salaries. The resulting loss of purchasing power has affected many of our colleagues. Experienced Hanover educators continue to be paid less than their peers in surrounding school districts, in part due to salary compression. Any decompression money should be targeted at steps 25 to 35 on the teacher's salary scale to compensate our underpaid veteran educators. Instructional assistants and other classified employees are also affected by salary compression. We request that decompression funding be used to reward those experienced workers as well. Our associations request that each teacher receive a completely unencumbered planning time each day and that teachers continue to receive compensation when asked to substitute during those planning periods. We ask for additional ESOL teachers so that our multilingual students can receive more support. Some of our ESOL teachers are spread across three buildings, and as you know, our multilingual population is growing quite rapidly. We also request additional instructional aides at all levels and that these workers receive additional specialized training because these IAs are working with our most vulnerable population, they need the training to do so.
Our associations also ask for stipends for our dual enrollment and advanced college academy teachers to recognize their status as adjunct faculty with Reynolds Community College. Our associations are very grateful to the school board and Dr. Gill for covering the bus drivers with VRS and the salary enhancements. To ease our driver's shortage and reward our hard-working drivers, we also ask the following steps be taken. Continue to pay the 5% employee share of the VRS contribution for the second year in a row. Add more personal days, possibly on a sliding scale. Establish a salary step scale with salary decompression, establish a safe driving bonus. Be given the day off when children are not in school to work secondary jobs. And continue to install air conditioning in as many buses as possible to accommodate the earlier start to the school year.
Twenty seconds.
We are hopeful that Hanover County will continue to absorb increases in the county's self-insured health plan and will not pass those on to faculty and staff. Our association asks for additional funding for the prep program so our retired teachers can continue to be the best substitute teachers we have. Thank you very much on behalf of VPE and HEA for considering our requests, and we thank you for everything you do for our schools.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that's all we have.
Fellow board members, I failed to tell you, but in your note package, their comments are in there, so you can see what they, as I was trying to keep up with what they were saying, it's clearly in there, so we have it to review. So I share that information with you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, that will close our public comment section. And now we will move on to both our sections, the budget section and the public comment. So with that, we'll move on to instructional highlight, Dr. Gill.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Our instructional highlight this evening is our annual update on what we term the student experience. This includes not only student achievement as it relates to SOL data and graduation rate, but the experience throughout from our youngest learners in pre-K all the way through graduation. In addition to that, Ms. Disharoon, our Director of Accreditation and Accountability, will also cover the items required annually by the School Board Policy 1.1-5, Ms. Disharoon.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gill. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gill's senior staff. Once again, Dr. Gill has stolen my introduction, so we can move on to the next slide, thank you. Each of our schools in Hanover County is fully accredited. This achievement is a product of the work and effort of not one role or person, but of the school community consisting of teachers, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, parents, school and division leaders, all focused on one thing, our students, and providing the best environment for learning. Just a note, the VDOE is beginning a process to revamp the accreditation system under which we are currently accredited. This work is just starting at the state level, and we will keep you posted regarding any changes to the pathway for accreditation as information becomes available. Hanover, the Hanover Promise embodies our vision for our schools and the commitment we have to each student to be prepared for their future. The profile of a Hanover graduate, graduate, sorry, contains four key components, a globally engaged citizen, empowered learner, responsible citizen, and resilient learner. Within each of these components are a set of I-CAN statements. These statements are the skills that students can demonstrate in their classrooms as they progress from kindergarten through their senior year. The I-CAN statements guide teacher planning, align the profile of a Hanover graduate with content standards to create an innovative and relevant learning opportunities, preparing our students for life. This past spring, the school board approved and adopted our new comprehensive plan. Gold One provides high-quality and relevant instruction that prepares students to be life-ready, productive individuals, supporting our efforts in creating students who can. 154 preschool students participated in the Hanover Preschool Program in the 22-23 school year. The Hanover County Preschool Program is designed to promote development and learning for our youngest learners through a multi-pronged approach that includes development of school readiness skills and social competencies through attention to health education, family support, community collaboration, and parental involvement. Our elementary school students focus on mastering the core content skills in reading, writing, math, social studies, and science. However, the elementary experience would not be complete without the robust programming provided in art, music, physical education, and of course, visiting the school library. Several of our elementary schools also continued or are now implementing the HOUSE system. The HOUSE system is designed to encourage students to build a positive connection to their school. Having mixed grade levels or mixed grade groups allows older students to form leadership skills and gain experience in mentoring. Younger students benefit from the experience and the encouragement of the students in the higher grades. The Start and Style Event was held for the first time in August of 2022. This event was created in order to provide an opportunity for students to select a first-day-of-school outfit. Approximately 400 students participated in the event. The event was staffed by community volunteers and Hanover County Public School students and staff. It was so successful that it was held again this August, serving even more students. Hanover strives to assist children in developing life skills by acquiring and effectively applying knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for other students, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. The work towards supporting our students and providing a climate that is conducive to learning has been a consistent goal of the Division. The commitment to this effort will continue in our new comprehensive plan under Goal Four, identify, design, and implement systems that support a positive educational climate and community. For example, the Universal Screener is a tool used to support student-employee wellness and is implemented in the fall and the spring in order to check in with students and staff to see how they are feeling and provide follow-up if requested. School-based teams consisting of teachers, counselors, school nurses, school psychologists, and administrators prepare monthly activities for students to create a healthy learning environment focused on topics such as kindness, community service, caring, and responsibility. In the spring of 2023, students participated in our state assessments, also known as the SOLs, in the content areas of math, reading, science, and social studies. Our eighth-grade students participated in a writing assessment as well. The performance of Hanover County Public School students exceeded the state performance in math, reading, social studies, and science. The middle school experience is a unique one, as so much change happens for students during the three short years. In middle school, students begin the path to specialization. They begin to explore and identify things of interest. In addition to the core content, middle school students are given the opportunity to explore new experiences through the elective offerings in fine arts, chorus, band strings, agriculture, theater arts, technology, pre-engineering, and world languages. To aid in their growth, middle school students also engage in career exploration, allowing them to learn about different career paths that match their talents and their budding interests. This work helps students to be prepared to select pathways in high school that will support their future goals. Hanover County Public Schools offers students several pathways or a combination of pathways in the high school from which to design their experience based on their interest and goals, such as career and technical education, the fine arts, the performing arts, JROTC, and advanced coursework through AP classes or the IB program. We also have dual enrollment, just to name a few. Our new comprehensive plan lays out objectives and strategies under Goal One to enhance and maximize the learning experiences, not only in literacy and numeracy, but in rigorous and advanced learning opportunities as well as career preparation. Approximately 1,375 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students took at least one advanced placement course during the 22-23 school year. Advanced placement courses offer students who are seeking rigorous and demanding curriculum the opportunity to challenge them. the opportunity to challenge themselves. Students may elect to take the AP exam at the end of the course and potentially earn college credit based on their qualifying score. The Reynolds Advanced College Academy, or ACA, provides high school students with the opportunity to earn an associate degree while completing the requirements for their high school diploma. Students who participate in this program take college-level courses during their junior and senior year through a cohort model that they enter when they're in the ninth grade. Students report that while the program is challenging and the experience is rewarding, it also helps to prepare them for... My page stuck together. I know, drum roll, please. For life after high school. There you have it. Approximately 40 ACA graduates earned their associate's degree at Reynolds Community College in May 2023, prior to earning their high school diploma as part of our fourth graduating class. Another pathway for our high school students to select is the International Baccalaureate Program, also known as the IB program. Approximately 500 11th and 12th grade students were enrolled in at least one international baccalaureate course during the 22-23 school year. This program is a comprehensive option for any student seeking a rigorous course of studies. This two-year curriculum adds to intellectual rigor and high academic standards by fostering a strong emphasis on the ideas of international understanding and responsible citizenship. HCPS also offers a robust CTE program that provides the opportunity for students to experience different career pathways in depth. Our popular programs range from careers in health, to HVAC, to culinary arts, to cosmetology. Many of our students select a combination of CTE courses and advanced learning opportunities, creating a customized experience that not only supports their personal interests, but prepares them well for the path they choose post-high school. As an extension of the CTE courses, many of our students participate in school-coordinated workplace experiences that are related to the students' career goals and/or interests. These work-based experiences are implemented in a partnership with local businesses, industries, or other organizations in the community, and take the form of internships, clinical experiences, apprenticeships, school-based enterprise, and co-ops. The online school served 250 students during the 22-23 school year in 4th through 12th grade. Virtual learning is a unique experience. Teachers in the online school strive to provide a relevant education that is engaging for all their learners. It's also in asynchronous format. Once again, our students demonstrated their love of the arts, whether in the area of performing or visual arts. The HCPS Performing Arts Program strives to provide all students with a high-quality music and arts education, which engages and inspires them to develop a lifelong love of performing arts, increases their self-confidence, creativity, imagination, and provides opportunities for self-expression. The visual arts programs provide rich experiences for students to incorporate critical thinking and communication skills, allow for innovative approaches in making connections to the world of art, while exploring the application of different mediums and materials. Preparing for the future. In Hanover, we have dedicated resources to helping students prepare for the future. This process begins in the elementary school, as students learn about their community and jobs within their community. In the middle school, students begin to develop more focused interests as they experience different elective options, and our middle school students also participate in career exploratory lessons and career cafes with the career counselors that are designed to explore the 16 career clusters and the numerous pathways to job attainment after high school. As students move into high school, their interests become more specialized, and the student is able to begin planning for the future. Through the career counselor, students learn about many pathways available to them, such as college, apprenticeships, two-year colleges, the military, or going straight into the workforce, as well as learning about scholarships that are available and how to apply for those scholarships. Our career counselors strive to make sure that our students have post-graduation plans, excuse me, that will help their definition of success. And here's our graduating class. Ninety-five point six of the graduating class graduated on time. Sixty-two point one earned an advanced diploma. Three point three percent earned an IB diploma. Thirty percent earned a standard or other diploma, and one percent earned a GED. And their plans for life after high school. Sixty-five planned to attend a four-year college. Seventeen percent planned to attend a two-year college. Three percent planned to enter the military. Four percent planned to go to an alternate education program, such as an apprenticeship or trade school. Ten percent planned to enter the workforce, and less than one percent were unsure of their post-graduation plans. Looking forward. Policy 1-1.5 requires an annual equity report and will be presented to the board yearly. You'll be provided with equity data report for the 22-23 school year that contains data sets that provide more in-depth data related to this presentation. Our new comprehensive plan provides us with a blueprint, not only for meeting the needs of our students, but expanding opportunities and enhancing the learning experiences for our students in order to help each child meet their personal goals. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the board members? Mr. Coleman?
Thank you for your presentation. I had a quick question around the military, the number of folks entering the military. What's the historical numbers on that? Has that three percent, has it gone down, has it gone up? Where's, where's that been?
It, I can provide you with, you know, five years' worth of data if you like.
Sure.
But it's typically right in that area. Some years, it's more like 2.9%. I know one year recently, I think it was 3.6%. So it's right in that, that area.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Ms. Disharoon, I thank you so much for providing this information to us. The detailed report, is that, is that what you sent us already, or are you going to send us that with the comparisons and stuff?
I believe it was.
Is that included in this? It may be, I just can't see what's in here. I'm just asking that. I don't know if this was your slides or if that was the details that you were just talking about. That's the only reason I asked that question.
It's actually a separate report. I actually provided it in the spring, but it was, because we hadn't finished with the 22-23 school year, some of the information was missing. So at this point, it is now a complete report. And we're going to attach it to this report.
Yeah, I don't want to ask you a whole bunch of questions if I can go in there and see it in the report. That's why I was asking the question. Okay? So thank you. Anybody else have any other questions? All righty. Thank you very much. It's wonderful. We appreciate that. Excellent. All right, Dr. Gill, I believe next on our agenda is our Anti-Bullying Prevention Month, and I would like to read the resolution, and then I would entertain a motion. How does that sound, Dr. Gill?
Sounds great to me, sir.
Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas over 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas an estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss school every day due to a fear of being bullied, whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace, and can happen in any spaces on and off school grounds. Whereas it is important to Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community, and whereas the VSBA has developed model policies to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors. Now therefore, the Hanover County School Board recognizes the month of October 2023 as VSBA Bullying Prevention Month, with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in Hanover schools and classrooms during that time. You've heard our proposed resolution to, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of this as our bullying prevention proclamation.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the bullying prevention resolution as you have read.
Thank you. Mr. Hunley, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Redd, is there any discussion from the board? Mr. Redd?
Yes. You know, the first three bullets up here, I can accept these at face value, because I'm not really familiar with where they got those numbers and whatnot, but I certainly agree with the next two, that bullying takes many different forms, and parents, teachers, and school administrations need to be aware of it. So I fully support this proclamation. I've read it pretty closely. I don't generally sign my name to something. I'm not going to be pretty sure I'm signing. So I can agree with this, and I support this.
Well, thank you, Mr. Redd. Are there any other board members? All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second, and discussion has now ended. All those in favor of the adoption of the proclamation as read, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Board members, please do not run out after the meeting. We need to sign this before you leave, please. Thank you. All right, Dr. Gill? I believe we're up to the budget development calendar, so Ms. Berta, I think it's up to you or somebody else. Uh-oh.
Just a quick setup, yes, this is the calendar that Ms. Berta presented to you for first read during the month of September. There have been a couple of minor adjustments. Actually, I believe it was our Director of Finance, Ms. Harmon, who presented it, and we'll go over some very minor modifications, and after which, if the board is satisfied with those, we will ask for your approval.
No wonder you weren't getting up, Ms. Berta.
It's me again.
You had me fooled.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. So as mentioned, this is for a, to approve the fiscal year 25 budget development calendar. This calendar was reviewed at the meeting last month. There are a few changes that we do want to bring to your attention. One is the public hearing that we did hold tonight. Also, the presentation of the school board's budget to the board supervisors will be on February 21st. I would also like to just highlight some of the other dates on this calendar as well. The superintendent's proposed budget will be presented on January 16th. There will be a public hearing and work session on January 23rd, and then you'll be voting on the proposed budget on February 13th. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now.
Does anybody have any questions? On the calendar only. Actually, I asked that. Entertain that.
Just the calendar.
Just the calendar. Anybody have any questions? All right. So I would entertain then, Ms. Harmon, I believe if this is right, I need to, we need to adopt this, Dr. Gill? So at this time, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of the budget development calendar as presented.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to make a motion to adopt the calendar as presented just now.
Mr. Eichenberry, and I see Ms. Welch is ready to second that?
Yes, I second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Welch on the second. We have a motion on the table and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right. And now, Dr. Gill, we're at the appointment of the Library Materials Committee?
Yes, correct, Mr. Chair. I'll turn that back over to you as it's put on.
I'll run with it. Thank you. We, I wanted to make the public aware that we did have an agenda modification at the beginning of our, when we first opened our meeting tonight at 5:00, and we have added two names into this, which is, which is being displayed, not being displayed now, and it's added the name of Sarah Long for the Ashland District, and it's added Dr. Frank Shelp in South Anna to replace Aaron Delger. I wanted to just make one comment about this before we, the board moves on this, is that this is in accordance with our policies that we worked on in June, and then I believe we passed in August, if I'm not mistaken, and we have, we have, all seven of us have sought input from our community for recommendations for this committee, and these names have now been presented and are here, and so with that, I would entertain a motion that we adopt the seven names that are recommended here for our Library Materials Committee in accordance with Policy 6-5.2 as amended. Ms. Hawkins?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. I recommend that we adopt these names for our Library Materials Committee as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hunley. Now that we have a motion and a second on the table, is there any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of adoption of the seven names as presented for the Library Materials Committee in accordance with Policy 6-5.2, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And now, I believe we're going to do a review of our model policies, or a review of proposed policy revisions, and am I right? Okay, good. I was just making sure who was getting up, so.
Mr. Chair, we have a number of policies for first read this evening. They are in different areas, so Ms. Baker will tag team with Ms. Seward, taking Ms. Baker with Human Resources Policies, and then Ms. Seward will have the latter half. Ms. Baker?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, school board members, and Dr. Gill. As Dr. Gill said, I will be kicking us off and then turning it over to Ms. Seward for the remainder of the policies. Tonight, I'm here to share with you 5-7.9. It is employee absences. Due to us implementing VRS for our transportation employees, we need to make slight wording adjustments to this one particular policy, changing it from the words "full-time" to "eligible," and then "per-eligible contract year." Very small adjustment, but this provides our transportation employees with personal leave to be consistent with our other VRS job families.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board members? Okay, with not hearing them, then this will lay over for 30 days, and we'll take it up next month. That's it? You're going to run away now? All right. So next proposed is on the effect of criminal convictions. So is that you? Ms. Seward?
It can be. Why, yes, yes, it is. I did submit that. Let's see, if we can just get that up there. So this is just a minor change to 5-2.4. It is a result of recent action by the General Assembly, and it brings our policy into compliance with both our current practice and the code. It's just inclusion of those words, solicitation there. You can see it comes straight out of the Code of Virginia. Certain criminal convictions are, of course, a bar. They would prohibit individuals from being able to work within the school division, and the General Assembly expanded the list of offenses to include solicitation as well of certain specific offenses.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Seward.
Yep, that's it for that one. The last three I have are all interrelated. You've heard a lot of conversation about the proposed, rather, the VDOE model policies that the Department of Education has released, and I have been instructed to draft or to sort of analyze what we already have in our policy manual and compare it to the VDOE model policies that were released by the Department of Education. I've done that, and I found that a large portion of the content that is included within the proposed model policies is already in your policy manual, so you wouldn't need to go back and make those revisions. There are a few things that are not in your policy manual, so I have made some draft revisions to three different policies for you. The first one is 7-1.4, student records. To include some of the provisions that are contained within the model policies that specifically relate to student records and how staff refers to children within the building, and let's see, so the very first change there included the word pronoun, so that indicates that staff will use the child's pronoun consistent and gender consistent with their identity when addressing the student if the parent has been involved and made that decision along with their child. Otherwise, the school staff will refer to each student in the same manner by which they're identified in their student's official record. It says that students can be called a nickname commonly associated with the name that's in their official record, except for instances such as a foreign language class. That language is taken verbatim from the model policy. Additionally, there below, you will see language that's also, sorry, just up there, just those other two paragraphs there at the bottom of the page, that language is also taken directly from the VDOE model policy. That was not in your policies before, so I've added it there at your request. so I've added it there at your request. And that is it for the last, other than updating the legal references at the end of that particular policy, 7-1.4. The next one is 7-1.7. You can see that there's really only one particular change in here, because a lot of what's in this model policy has already been included within your policy from the last time. You did a deep dive into this policy and added a lot of information in the policy, so the bulk of what's in the VDOE model policy is already in here. So the only change there was for consistency's sake. When the phrase "sex" is used, it is intended to mean biologics, biological sex, to match up with the VDOE model policy. And the final policy deals with extracurricular activities. This includes the remaining provisions of the VDOE model policy that were not already embedded within your current policy. So you can see there that it indicates that sports participation that is already sex segregated will continue to be sex segregated by biological sex. Reasonable modifications will be permitted to the extent required by law. All of these policies have been updated to include the reference to the model policies and the legal reference section. I've also changed "shall" to "will" as we've been doing with the rest of our policies. So if you have any questions about any particular provisions, anything that you think isn't in there and should be, or vice versa, I'm happy to help.
Mr. Redd?
Yes, sir. On the Policy 7-1.4, down in paragraph 13 or item 13, if you pull that up on your slide there. It's coming, I think.
1.4? It only has 10 on this one.
10.
If there are another 13 somewhere?
Oh, well, have I got the wrong number?
Student records?
Yeah, student records.
It's in the list of, are you talking about the bullet, the number 13?
Number 13 under student records.
Yes, sir. When the school division can disclose information from an educational record.
Right, let's drop down to where, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph. It says, "Upon request of a student and parent." I think if you look back at the VDOE policy, it says that the student's parents has instructed in writing that another name be used, a pronoun.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that we say "upon written request," not just "request," because that means, upon request could mean verbal request by a student and parent. I think it probably should say "written request" if we're going to.
I can tell you that that is how it's being implemented, is a written, there's a form that's filled out, and the, the school administration, along with the counselor, sits down and has a conversation with the student and the parent together about how they can best support the student. So there are forms that would have to be signed. So while the word "written" isn't in here, you're right, that is how it is being implemented, but of course, happy to make whatever amendments the board thinks appropriate.
I would feel like we'd want to, we'd want our policy to say what we mean, so I would say "upon written request" would be my thought. That's up to the board, if y'all want to agree or disagree, but we keep on going to the end, you know, that second sentence, or the sentence continues, and it goes on, and it says, "and gender consistent with the student's gender identity on other school records or documents," and it says "and," and I think that word "and" should be left out of there, shouldn't it? Because "on other student records or documents when addressing the student," not "and when addressing." I don't know, am I being picky here?
No, I think the word "and" could come out. "Upon request of the student and parent, school staff will use the name, pronoun, and gender consistent with student's gender identity on other school records or documents when addressing the student."
Right.
Otherwise, school staff will refer to, yes, we could strike the word "and."
But I think the word "and" should be, should strike that. They're the only two things I had in that, that section.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Anybody else? Any other board comments? Any comments on any of the other policies? I just want to make sure, Ms. Seward, I want to make sure I ask the question that, this is a regular practice that we do. We, we take, when the, when the, when the legislature and the governor signs a bill into law, we review the law, and then you make, you or whoever the appropriate staff is, make recommendations of policy changes that we might have to make based upon guidance that has come out of the state. Is that a safe statement, that we routinely do this?
Historically, I have reviewed model policies that have been proposed and advised the board when there are differences, and then it's up to the board to determine what changes you make. Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is, we're following a normal established practice, is what I was really trying to get to, on this one, as well as anything else, when, usually we do them in July or August, because we get so much to go into effect on July 1st. Okay? Any other concerns, comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Seward. This will lay over for 30 days, and we will make decisions a month from now. And with that, Dr. Gill, I think we're going to hear about some new course recommendations.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Annually, the board hears new course recommendations prepared by our hard-working curriculum and instruction department, with the input from lots of others. Here to present the request for this coming year, which would actually be the 24, 25 school years, our Chief Academic Officer, Ms. Greif.
Thank you, Dr. Gill. Mr. Chair, board members, I'm excited to bring to you a handful of courses that our staff has identified will serve the needs of our students well at the secondary. I'm just going to take them one at a time. The first is Visual Arts SLB. That's code in the IB world for whether a course is offered over the course of two years, one year. What this is going to indicate to us, that it fulfills a, we have SL and DL classes. This one would be an SL, which is a little bit lower intensity of a class, but we're going to take this over the course of two years, so that the students have ample time to fulfill the requirements. So it will be incorporated and blended with the other visual arts classes that we have in the IB world. The next two I'm going to take together are two coming from Mr. Roaring, and they are going to help support the way that we need to move forward with our culinary program. As we discussed briefly with you, we are looking at some reorganization according to state regulations required, with required hours. These two courses will be able to help our students to maintain enrollment in that program as we head through their 11th and 12th grade years, and provide them with many other opportunities that will help them to find and seek jobs later on. And then human geography has been, and it's an AP class. It is seen as one of the entry-level AP classes, so it is appropriate for our younger students as a good entryway into advanced course placements that will help the students to earn college credits and engage in very rigorous coursework towards the beginning of their high school career. And then the last one is a slight variation of the Algebra I class that we have. It is being developed in order to align better with the way that the state is asking the progression of courses to take place in mathematics, and that information has just been released to us. So those are the courses. We are happy to answer questions tonight or bring back answers to you next month when you approve or disapprove of the courses.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Greif. Is there any, any comments or questions from the Wow, you did a great job. Thank you, Ms. Greif. Okay, next, we, under information and discussion, Dr. Gill, do you want to preface this, or?
Just very briefly, the board had requested, and we are happy to provide, a hiring and staffing update in all roles, as well as where we are at this point in the career, in the year, rather, as we are now well over a month into the school year, almost two months. And here to provide, it's our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Ms. Baker.
Hello again, Mr. Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Gill. I'm here to provide a recruiting update. Presently, we have four classroom teacher vacancies. These are all new vacancies to us. We have a preschool teacher at Mechanicsville Elementary, an itinerant PE teacher for elementary, a special education teacher at Liberty Middle, and a special education position at Bell Creek Middle. We also have a librarian opening at Chico Hominy Middle. I did share this one with you last month. We did make an offer to a candidate who declined our position, so we are back to the drawing board and looking for more candidates on that one. In mid-August, I shared with you that we had about 31 instructional assistant vacancies. Presently, we're down to 14, so we're going in the right direction. We have one job offer pending currently. Next, I want to share with you some information about our bus driver recruitment. So we are still hovering right around 52 bus driver vacancies. I want to give a huge shout-out to the "Brag on a Bus Driver" campaign. It was huge through our social media platform. Thank you, Mr. Whitley and team, and we received a lot of great feedback on our bus drivers, and they received a lot of wonderful kudos that they truly deserve. We also announced about a week ago a sign-on and referral bonus. So if you refer a bus driver, it will be a $2,000 sign, a referral bonus for the employee and a $3,000 sign-on for the bus driver. Since we launched this campaign, we've received 12 new applications, so we're thrilled. Currently, we have two people finishing their CDL training. We had two new applicants start yesterday for their training. We have three candidates that are pending their fingerprint results, and we are very optimistic that these 12 new applications can join our October 30th training session. We had a job fair on October 5th at the Atlee Public Library. On October 26th, we have a job fair scheduled at the Mechanicsville Public Library. On October 21st, we will have a table at the American Family Fitness Family Day. Tried to say that three times.
[laughing]
And that's the Mechanicsville location. We continue to advertise on, indeed, we place our buses and bus banners strategically across the division, and of course, we still have all of our positions posted on our own website. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baker. That was wonderful. Does the board have any comments or questions for Ms. Baker? I, I just want to comment on one thing, Ms. Baker, and I just want to tell you that I really believe that, you know, we owe a whole lot of kudos to the, the bus drivers that we currently have. They're doing an excellent job. We appreciate them. We are not forgetting about them as a board as we move forward, going into our budgetary process. So I want to give some love to the bus drivers and to all of our employees. As we begin this budget process, we plan on spending some serious time as a board, working together to try to come up with and support some of the stuff we heard tonight in our budget presentation, so that we can try to make sure that everybody understands that we really are trying to help solve some of the issues and give us the people that we need to have. The IAs, that's a wonderful story, that we went from so many down to where we are today, and that we can continue to fill those positions as the year goes on. They are very valuable, especially at the elementary school level. They are very valuable and are welcomed. Every minute of every day, I've, I think, Mr. Eichenberry and I have visited 15, 16, or 17, I've lost track now, schools where we've actually sat down with the principals, and it is just so well-received having those IAs when they can have them. And so that's just a real kudos to your team. And so I just wanted to make sure that we all understand that, that your board hears you, and that we are going to work to try to do the very best we possibly can with the money, if we ever find out how much we get going forward, then we will, we will work with you to try to encourage this continued success that you're having. So I wanted to just draw that to everybody's attention tonight, and so with that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we would like to have this, like, on a regular basis, just so you know that now.
And I'd like to introduce you also to Dr. Parker.
Oh, hi, Dr. Parker.
Dr. Parker leads a lot of our recruiting efforts, so I think she and I will be tag teaming in the future.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gill.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, Mr. Coach Eichenberg, some?
Well, since we're still in the category of information and discussion, and I've unfortunately, and it's, it's my fault, I've gotten accustomed to the screen. Those of you that don't know this, we have a screen right here that y'all have, and I've grown accustomed to it, but when Mr. Redd was asking questions, my screen wasn't lit, and I was lost.
[laughing]
To be honest with you. And so I actually had another question about, with Ms. Seward, regarding Policy 7-1.7.
Yes, sir.
And if I have permission to?
Of course.
And there's a clause early in that policy, I believe on the first page, that allows for students to use a single-user facility if they request that, and that kind of matches the governor's language of an opt-out, which we've received an awful lot of email about over the course of the last couple of months. My question is, do we have a form for the child and/or parent to fill out that allows them to use that single facility and not the communal facility?
No, sir. There is no form, and again, this is, this is just a draft policy revision for your consideration. The current policy that's in place today does include a provision that says, "Single-user facilities in common areas of a school may also be used by any student." So currently, as of today, a student can use a single-user facility without having a parent sign a note, and they can use it for, for any number of reasons. They want a little privacy, they can go to that single-user facility. They do not need a parental note. So the opt-out provision seemed duplicative of a process that you all already have in place.
Okay, that answers that, but I'm trying now, hypothesizing a possible large number of students that might want to request that single-user facility, and, and can we accommodate that?
I couldn't speak to facilities, but this, this has been in place already today, and I've not been made aware of any concerns with children waiting outside for, you know, for longer than a few minutes, as, as anyone might expect to outside of a restroom, but I don't, I'm not aware of any problems with the way it's currently been implemented with single-user facilities in the hallways that the students already have access to.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Dr. Gill, now we're on to you.
Yes, thanks, sir. Your materials for board review is just your monthly packet, your fiscal status report, facility usage, and calendar, board-related events, nothing out of the ordinary. And your next meeting's topic, so we'll announce that the school board will be holding a work session. More details to come on October the 24th, and then, of course, our next regular meeting will be on November the 14th. We will be bringing back the five policy revisions that you heard this evening, as well as the new course recommendations for your consideration. We also hope that during the work session, the board has indicated that we'll be working on overall goals as well as budget goals as we kind of enter all things budget season.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Yes, Dr. Gill, you actually stole my thunder as I closed in here, and I do want to comment that the rooms that we currently use for meetings, either this one or the ones in our school, at the, at the, at the school board office, the central office, as I call it, those two rooms are used for a lot of things, especially during a school day, to include testing and other outside activities. And so a lot of times, when we're trying to do things like have a work session, those rooms have not been available. So that is a, that is a statement that I heard here tonight, so I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that, that the rooms, and this room, and the other facilities that we have access to are not always available at our beck and call, because we do care about testing and educating our students and doing the things that we use them for. So I did want to make that point, Dr. Gill. So anything else? Does any board members have anything else tonight? Oh, Dr. Gill?
Just one other announcement, Mr. Chair, that neglected. Mr. Hunley whispered to me that the school board will be visiting on its annual school tours over three days, and be dividing up the schools, and we always look forward to those events, and get to highlight all of the, the many great things going on in our schools, and those will be starting over the course of the next month plus. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I'll tag-team you and say that at least one of the visits, we'll be eating in the cafeteria with the students and eating the cafeteria food. So I just share that with you, and we look forward to that, that day occurring. Is that right? All right.
I believe that'll be at Mechanicsville High School.
I wasn't going to tell that surprise, but okay, now they know. So, all right, any, anything else? Any other board members? Mr. Redd?
Well, I guess we're moving along here. I got a call from Mr. Sutton yesterday, and he commended us on efficiently adjourning our meetings, since he's, you know, in retirement now from the board. He extended a great, he told me, he says, "I extended a great deal of effort in training you, John Redd."
I'll make sure I don't?
Because you were sitting beside me.
Right.
So he's expecting that we will adjourn the meetings efficiently and effectively, like he has trained us.
Yes, sir. I'll make sure I call on you. Let me make sure no other board member has anything else to say, sir.
Okay.
Does any other board members have anything else to bring before us tonight? Anybody at all? All right. With that, Mr. Redd, in honor of the illustrious wise man of the East, do you have a motion?
Yes, and I think Mr. Sutton is listening tonight, so, Mr. Sutton, I am moving that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, that we are adjourned. Motion carries, that we are adjourned.